We'll note that all commissioners are present. First item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes or additions to the order of business?
Doug.
Yes, President Johnson. An item to consent agenda, we have an addendum for the approval of accounts payable. When we get to that.
Okay. So we'll add accounts payable addendum. Any other changes?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Would there be a motion then to approve the order of business with that one addition?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. So the motion carries. Then we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to the non-timetable agenda. First item we have, there item A is a fee resolution regarding water usage rates. And City Attorney Goss will introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. President. City staff recommends an increase in water rates in 2015 to offset the Southwest water increase. The proposed resolution is an increase for 33 cents per thousand gallons, or an increase from $4.96 to $5.29 per thousand gallons. And this would be effective as of October 1st, 2015. No further increases recommended for 2016. City staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. You've heard City Attorney's introduction and recommendation. Are there any questions, comments, discussion?
Just for those who might be watching, I know we talked about this, but what do we think the typical increase for a typical household is going to be with 33 cents?
Commissioner Jackson, based off the surveys that we've been seeing with Nexus and AE2S, the typical household is 6,000 gallons. And so we're looking at 33 cent increase would equate to about $1.98 per month per household.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? I think this is Resolution 34-2015.
That's correct.
Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
I'll second.
We have the motion to approve and second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item B is for our consideration, is the approval of some right-of-way agreements. There are five of them, and we will take each one individually. And then we'll call on City Attorney Goss to introduce these items and tell us more about them.
These are right-of-way agreements for Sixth Street East, which is just north of Dan Porter Motors. They've been executed by the five property owners. Under the agreement, the city agrees to provide an asphalt overlay on existing roadway with the adjacent property owners paying half of the cost of the projects and donating the 25-foot right-of-way to the city. Dan Porter's has agreed to pay the other half of the cost. We have not received Dan Porter's portion yet, so we are recommending approval of the right-of-way agreements conditioned on receiving Dan Porter's half of the cost of the project.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Goss. Any comments or questions by commissioners here? So the motions for each of the five would be the same if you agree with the recommendation. And that would be to approve, but conditioned upon receipt of the money from Mr. Porter.
Correct.
Anyone care to move that motion for the very first agreement?
I'll move that we approve the Ebner right-of-way agreement.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then we're going to vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Would there be a motion regarding the second agreement?
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion to approve and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And then we have the third agreement, the Sandbig Agreement.
I'll move we approve the Sandbig Agreement.
Second.
With the motion and the second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So that motion carries. And we have the Frank Agreement.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And finally, the COM Agreement.
Move we approve the COM Agreement.
Second.
With the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move down to item C. This is a planning and zoning ordinance. And City Attorney Goss will introduce this item also.
Thank you, Mr. President. As discussed last meeting, there are currently two different city ordinances regarding planning and zoning members, creating ambiguity. This proposed ordinance eliminates one of the ordinances and clarifies the membership, including the city's current practice of having not more than 10 members, one being a city commission member, one representing the park board, and two members being appointed by the county commission pursuant to the state code based on a population of less than 25,000. City staff recommends approval.
Okay, and this ordinance, 1593?
That's correct.
All right. Before we get into discussion here, I'll just ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on proposed ordinance 1593. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment? All right, there's no one from the public that wishes to comment? Are there any comments by city commissioners?
This is essentially what we've done for at least several years. So it'll be good just to get it clarified.
Mr. Jackson, anybody else? I have a comment. I'm just thinking maybe instead of saying it is highly recommended that one of the positions, you know, also include a member of Park and Recreation, I think I would just say that one of the positions include Park and Rec. And then if they decline, then that position just be appointed by the city administrator and approved by the, you know, the city commission. I think I would just come out and say it rather than say it's highly recommended. I mean, even though it's highly recommended, I don't think you'd have to do it, even if it wasn't so highly recommended.
That accomplishes the same goal.
Right.
So.
I mean, if they refuse to serve, then you have the ability to appoint someone else. That's the only... Mr. Jackson?
What if the park board wanted to appoint someone or recommend someone who didn't sit on the park board? I don't think we would care. Maybe recently, you know, someone who had recently gone off the park board or something like that.
You know, at the time when this was drafted, Commissioner Jackson, it was our intent to reflect current membership. But certainly, you know, we considered that question. And at that point, it becomes really an at-large appointment by the commission, so...
Except the recommendation would come from Park and Rec.
They could always make a recommendation. And since it's, I agree, it's desirable that either a sitting member or a past member sit on planning and zoning. That's a good thing. You know, I think you as city administrator would take that into account in search for a candidate that could represent their interests even if one of the five chose not to sit on the zoning commission.
Well, certainly as President Johnson has suggested the change, that would help with what you're mentioning, Commissioner Jackson, that they simply either make a recommendation from their body or not.
You could say it here. It could be a member of the commission or the parking board.
Or past.
Or past member.
About a staff member? What if they wanted to appoint one of their staff?
We also considered that as well. And I actually contacted the school for a similar type of situation. And it was our recommendation not to appoint a staff member as ex officio. I think there's some, I think there's some positive things about having an elected official on the boards themselves as opposed to an appointed staff.
And I'd agree with that. I'm just trying to build some flexibility into it, you know, so we don't get pigeonholed.
Yeah.
Well, if they decline, then the city administrator has a right to fill that position subject to the approval of the commission. He really has all the latitude in the world, really.
With cleaning this up, how many positions short will we be right now?
We would have, is there still a total of 10? Nine. There's always an odd number. The way that this is written requires an odd number. So nine would be the maximum.
But do we have nine right now, or are we short?
We don't, but we have three people who are interested. So we would, we could go up to the 10 that the current ordinance allows. I think it's really beneficial to have an odd number, just for voting purposes.
Other comments? Well, I think we can go ahead, whether we have the language in there that I suggest or not. I think we could go ahead and act on first reading so we can move this along.
Yes, and those revisions can be made before second reading.
Is there any objections to the city attorney making revisions we just discussed?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion then regarding the first reading of ordinance 1593?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to item D. This is an ordinance involving our liquor licenses and has to do with prohibited hours and days. City Attorney Goss will also introduce this item.
This is the first reading of an ordinance which updates the city code to reflect the recent legislative changes, allowing on-sale liquor sales to begin at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays. This would be for restaurants. Off-sale liquor sales would still not be allowed until noon. Revisions were made since the last meeting based on the comments from the commission to keep the 1:00 a.m. cutoff for liquor sales rather than following the state revision of 2:00 a.m. City staff recommends approval.
Thank you. This would be ordinance 1594. Anybody wishing to comment on this proposed ordinance may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to comment on ordinance 1594? There's no one from the public? Any comments by city commission members?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion to approve and the second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to item E. This is also the City Attorney Goss. You know, this is a liquor license issue, and he'll let you introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a request from Alpercutin Mexican Restaurant for a beer-only liquor license. Francisco Herrera is the proprietor and has passed the background check and paid the appropriate fees. City staff recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the introduction, the recommendation. Any comments or questions?
President, the background check is not a U.S. Background check indicated it's not a U.S. citizen, but hold a green card. Is that consistent with the ordinance?
Yes, it is. I actually looked into that, and the requirement is a legal resident of the U.S., which a green card establishes that.
Just to follow up to that, Commissioner Steiner, green cards in this case were issued for 10 years. So it's a longstanding...
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion regarding this item?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion to approve and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item F is some proclamations. Mr. Kessel, are you introducing these?
Certainly, President Johnson, the first one is a proclamation regarding manufacturing day in the city of Dickinson. This is a resolution that we have entertained in the past. And I would certainly recommend we do the same.
Keep talking until I find it. I know it's here.
The extra mile day celebration is another proclamation that is regarding citizens going, as the proverbial says, the extra mile in a way to help out others, both in their families, their community, their country, and bottom line, to make the world a better place.
Okay. I found them, and I'll read the, the manufacturing day is actually a resolution. So that'd be Resolution 35?
Yes.
And that'll require action then by the commission. Now, I'll read it, and then I'll ask for a motion regarding its approval. Whereas the city of Dickinson has a strong history as a community supporting manufacturing and the approximately 1,400 stable sustained jobs that manufacturers provide. And whereas manufacturing is cornerstone of innovation in our economy, manufacturing firms fund most domestic corporate research and development, and the resulting innovations and productivity growth improve our standard of living. And whereas many opportunities exist for Dickinson area residents to utilize their skills and talents in manufacturing in order to improve their lives and those of their loved ones. And whereas manufacturing diversifies the local economy, thereby bringing sustainability to the community. And whereas manufacturing is a significant creator of new wealth by means of sales outside of our area and outside of our state. And whereas over 1,200 North Dakota companies provide excellent careers in manufacturing for some 44,000 people and are adding new jobs every day. Now therefore, I, Dennis Johnson, President of Board of City Commission of the city of Dickinson, do hereby proclaim October 7th, 2015 as Manufacturing Day in Dickinson, and encourage all citizens to consider the positive impact of modern manufacturing on their lives and its contribution to the success of Dickinson, Stark County, North Dakota, and the United States of America. This is Resolution Number 35-2015, and the chair would entertain a motion regarding its
Make motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Second item then is a proclamation. And that was a proclamation regarding the extra mile day. So it goes as follows. Whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which acknowledges that a special diversity exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2015. Now therefore, I, President of the City Commission of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2015 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. So if there are no objections by my fellow commissioners, I will go ahead and sign this. And then we'll pass it down to the city administrator, Kessel, so he can attest my signature. All right. We have new sound system, so we're still working with it. Item G is the Crooked Crane Trail bid, and Sean Kessel is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, President Johnson. What I'd like to do is turn this item over to Brett Gerholdt. Brett Gerholdt is our KLJ representative who helped design the Crooked Crane Trail Phase One, which is the fitness path. And he is here before you to explain the bid process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Good evening, President, Commissioners. My name is Brett Gerholdt, project manager with KLJ. Here just to present the results of the bid opening. In your packets, I did want to make one correction right away, is that there is an electrical contract bid summary, and that summary is actually $46,241, not $80,050. So just to kind of mark that. We put the project together with a series of alternates, a base bid and alternates, which would give the city the review to select either an asphalt or a concrete bid alternate. And basically, the summary of the bids was attached in the bid summary that we sent, and I'll just kind of summarize that. We found wind construction to be the apparent low bidder with a bid of a concrete alternate. And the base bid for wind construction is $1,000,2641.40. With that, we also had bid three alternates, and the alternates, again, were for the pavement trail system, also for site furnishings that go along the trail's edge, things like landscaping, signs, mile marker signs to go along with that. And also included in that is a separate electrical construction bid, which we had one bidder, which was Berger Construction. So in front of you is the decision to award the contract then to wind construction for the concrete trail alternate. Total then bid for wind would be $1,527,284.40, with the electrical bid going to Berger Electric in the amount of $46,241. Be happy to entertain any questions from any of you on this project at this time?
Mr. President.
Of the 46,000, what is the electrical work?
So included with the electrical work at each, we have three different exercise and fitness pods. And each of those pods will have three light standards, which will be extending site electrical work to those to illuminate them basically for safety and security.
So tell me again, you said wind's base bid was a $1,012, but you're recommending a total award of $1,000,500. How did we get from the $1,012 to the $1,000,500?
Okay, so as part of this project, we have two sources of funding outside the city and the city's partners. We have an outdoor heritage fund grant in the amount of $975,000. And my understanding is that the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation has come forward with a grant in the amount of $235,000. So we analyzed your total available budget for the project, which would be city funding and the grants, and that's what constituted the project budget of approximately where it's at. So looking at the alternates and what fit within that budget is where we decided to recommend the award of the alternates in addition to the project.
So you're accepting the alternates as well as the base bid?
Correct.
That's how we go from the $1,000,500. And what do we get for the alternates? Give us an example of what...
Okay, so alternate two, well, let me just kind of step back and describe how we put this together in a little bit more detail, just so you know. What we like to do with these is bid asphalt and concrete as alternates. That way, when we get to opening the bids, we can evaluate based on some lifecycle costs which option is best. And so normally, we see asphalt come in more cost-effective, less than concrete. And in this case, we saw the exact opposite. We saw concrete being the option when we combined all the alternates with the base bid of being the most cost-effective based on the initial construction and long-term lifecycle costs. We've been seeing with our trail projects, a replacement of asphalt about every 10 or 11 years, varies depending on the soils and the conditions. But we felt it was in the city's best interest to look at both surfacing options for the trail. And if concrete came in within the budget, that could be considered, and at this point it is, within the budget of what we're aware of. So then alternate one basically is the base bid plus asphalt. Alternate two would be base bid plus concrete. Alternate three actually is some bid items that include landscaping and site furnishings around the exercise pods, that there's three of in this plan. And then alternate number four includes site furnishings like benches, a project sign, and then mile marker signs that indicate where you are on the trail in terms of mileage and quarter mileage. We bid those as alternates just because we wanted to evaluate how this would come in in terms of the budget and then make the decision to award based on those alternates. And of course, with the electrical construction contract being estimated over 25,000, that's its own separate contract that's awarded separately from the contract that would be awarded to wind.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? So are we dealing with two separate motions here and then? One for the electrical contractor and one for the surface contracting? Or is it just...
It's two bids.
Two bids.
Okay, so can we just call them the electrical contract and the concrete contract? Or what do you call them?
The first bid is for the construction of the...
The first bid is for the construction of the pathway itself and all of its accoutrements. So it's more than just concrete.
All right. Well, I was just looking for something I could remember, but...
Path.
Path. Sir, a motion regarding what Mr. Kessel just said.
Make a motion to approve.
Sir, a second.
Right.
The motion was second. Other discussion. Attorney, none then will vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Then you have the electrical bid.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Sir, a second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Go ahead and vote then. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Thank you. All right, it's seven o'clock, or five o'clock? It's seven somewhere, but it's five here, I guess. I must be in a hurry to be done. It's five o'clock. We have a timetable agenda item there. It's a presentation regarding the Dickinson Airport budget, and Airport Manager Kelly Brown will make that presentation.
Good afternoon, President Commissioners. Kelly Brown, Airport Manager, Dickinson Municipal. I have today approved a proposed 2016 airport budget as presented. I hope all of that made it into your packets this afternoon. The North Dakota State Legislature this year changed the law requiring that authority boards shall have their budgets approved by the municipalities that fund them. That's why I'm here tonight, for you guys to approve our 2016 budget.
Are you going to tell us about it a little bit?
Sure. Last year, our budget was just over $1 million operating. This year, our proposed budget is $1.8 million. It's a significant increase, but we also have maintenance projects that we need to take care of this year at the airport. We have a hangar door that needs to be repaired, replaced, and repaired. We're going to do some painting to the terminal inside in the lobby and to the exterior of the terminal, and there's a couple of the projects. So that's where the bulk of the increase came from.
Is it a balanced budget?
Sorry?
Is it a balanced budget?
It is. It is. We're under our projected income for next year. Working my way down to that page here. Our proposed income for 2016 is $2,030,000, just a little over, and our budget for this year is $1.864 million.
And this budget includes a tax, property tax levy of, is it $474,000?
That's correct.
Anybody have comments or questions?
Mr. President, I would just say that working with the Airport Board, they've done some great things out there. I know there's a lot of improvements that are going to be done besides the painting and the staining they're working on, the parking lot. They're getting new equipment. They're working on the runway. There's been some issues with the runway. A little bumpy out there, but they're taking care of it. So I think they're doing a great job out there.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Anybody else? Mr. Kessel?
Mr. Brown, I'm curious, you know, earlier, you presented to the Commission about the need for a loan for a parking lot resurfacing. Is that in this budget, or you...
It's not, but we have the ability to take care of that if we decide to take the offer that's been presented to the airport. We have the funds necessary to meet that obligation.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? So the legislature requires that we have formally approved this budget?
That's correct, President Johnson. It's a new change this year. The reason for the change is the legislature wanted to have elected officials be in charge of budget approvals. The Airport Authority did not have elected officials that are on its Airport Board. You, as a commission, appoint those members, and so it didn't qualify to meet the intent of their change. And so since we're the body that basically created the Airport Authority, they have to come to the City Commission then to gain approval by a board of elected officials.
Mr. Brown, when do you normally have your budget complete? What time of the year?
First part is September.
But I was wondering if, you know, the city is actively working on its budget in August, if maybe even we could have a kind of an initial draft of the airport budget in August while we're looking at our numbers and get a chance to be familiar with them. I think acting on it at this time is still appropriate, but rather than wait until the end of September for us to... You must have a draft at some point in time.
We do. We do, Mr. President. We've been working on the budget for a couple of months, so I mean, to get that in front of you guys earlier, that's easy to do.
Yeah, and I think if you stamp a draft, the commission understands that it's work in progress.
Yep.
Yeah, we've set aside dollars. We were going to use future fund revenues to do that. That balance is sufficient to make the loan.
Yeah, was the loan amount $125,000 that was requested?
That's what we requested, yeah.
And you'll make a determination as the year goes on whether or not you actually need to borrow that money.
That's correct. We don't want to spend money on something that, you know, we may not need, so, you know, if we can continue to kind of get by until we accomplish bigger goals, you know, we'd rather be fiscally conservative and not spend that money if we don't absolutely have to.
I think you're following Commissioner Jackson's advice that he gave us three or four years ago, and that's plan for the most and bill for the least.
It's good advice.
Yes. Okay, so any other discussion? Is there a motion regarding this item?
A second.
We have a motion to approve on the second. Any other discussion? Attorney, none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here. We're going to drop down to the non-timetable agenda, and we'll start with reports. We'll see if we can get Mrs. Nomenek's hiring journal report yet.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. On top of our list, we have police officer openings. Right now, we've got two openings that we will be doing interviews for in the next couple of weeks. We had one senior police officer position recently had a retirement and filled that internally. We have one communication specialist position that's open, and we are holding off on that until the move is complete to the new Public Safety Center so that we don't have to retrain on new software. So that will be opening up soon. Sanitation operator, we have two actually in the landfill that were just, offers were just made, and we're in the background phase for both of those positions. We have museum assistant position. We filled the full-time position internally, which leaves us with a part-time museum assistant position that we have not opened yet. We had a full-time administrative assistant position for the fire department that was awarded to us this year, mid-year opening, and we did fill that, and so we'll have that new person starting out at the Public Safety Center with the move. And then that leaves us with the last three positions: city engineer and deputy city administrator and forester position, which we have, do not have open at this time. We will be opening them soon. Something I just wanted to mention to the commission as well, I just recently went to a state HR conference and attended several sessions regarding hiring practices and interviewing and that sort of thing, trying to get some new ideas for us. And one thing that we ran across, that I ran across quite often in some of those seminars was the option to use hiring agencies to help us with some of those higher-end positions such as the deputy city administrator and city engineer. Those are positions that we've had open for quite a long time prior to Mr. Valeski coming to us. That position had been open for well over a year and was very difficult for us to fill. As you know, city engineer has been as well. So something that I would like to pursue with the civil service, and if they are in agreement, I may be bringing some options forward to you as well to look at that if that is something that we can do in the future.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessel, would you take your special assessment commission?
Thank you, President Johnson. I must regret to inform you that Chairman Bleth has resigned from the Special Assessment Commission. This is a very difficult board to get members to be recruited to. It doesn't meet often, but when it does meet, they have difficult work to undergo. So that leaves us, I believe, with two members left on that Special Assessment Commission, and we are brainstorming ways in which to make that Special Assessment Commission more viable, I guess. You know, one of those things that we discussed was possibly coalescing that board with another existing board, whether that's Special Assessment Commission with, let's say, Planning and Zoning, or Board of Adjustment, or something like that, so that they would take on these duties as well. Since it's infrequently that we do special assess properties, we thought that might be an option to consider. If not, then we would have to go back to the traditional method of finding interested parties and approving their board memberships here at the City Commission level. So I guess I'd like to hear your thoughts on the idea of possibly combining some of these boards. Now, I will say that I do think that in the future, we'll be using special assessment a little bit more, so they might meet a little more regularly than they do today, but it's hard to predict.
You and I briefly discussed whether or not this board was required by Centric Code, and that would have a bearing on our options, and I think you weren't really sure if it was required or not.
That's correct, President Johnson, and I didn't have an opportunity between that conversation and this meeting to verify.
I think, you know, I can understand when we were a smaller city and had a smaller staff, you'd rely on volunteers a lot more for these various boards. If this is one that is not required by the Centric Code, then I would basically look at two options. One option is the one you mentioned, combining it with an existing entity. The second option is you, we delegate this to city staff. We now have a planner, we now have an engineer, you know, you have the city attorney, and you could make recommendations to the commission, and the commission, you know, could hold hearings and pass, or, you know, pass judgment, I guess, on the commission's recommendation. But if it's required, of course, by the Centric Code, then that's what you have to do.
Well, we'll certainly look into the requirements that the state law places upon us with regard to Special Assessment Commission.
Okay. It's 5:15, so we'll leave your reports and go back to the timetable agenda. And at 5:15, we have a presentation by Midcontinent Communications, and here it says that Andy Jensen and Brett Steele, welcome.
Mr. President, I'm with the City Commissioners.
I don't know if my mic, got my sound powered up back there or not, but...
The mayor is important. There you go. Not that I... No, but we like to hear you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm Brett Steele. This is Andy Jensen. We're both with Midcontinent Communications here in Dickinson. I guess we just came by to talk about a few of the grants that the Midcontinent Foundation has given out this last week. First, a little bit of background on the Midcontinent Foundation. We actually developed it in 1987. It's a board made up of Midcontinent employees, and the board actually consists of anybody from somebody that answers the phone to our CEOs, so it's a very broad diversity of people that decide on these grants. Applications are collected twice a year through the Midcontinent's website from qualified nonprofit organizations to help with capital projects, obtain equipment and services, and various other areas that contribute to the majority of the community appeal. We've actually given out over $3 million to communities that we serve that are within our footprint. And Andy will talk a little bit more about the ones we just gave out this last week.
Yeah, last week, September 16, we gave out throughout our company $100,000 in grants. Eight of those grants actually went throughout Dickinson. It came to a total of $11,500. We gave $1,500 to Best Friends Mentoring Program, $1,000 to the City of Dickinson, $2,500 to Dickinson Fire Department, $1,500 to Southwest Homeless Coalition, $1,000 to the Strom Center at ESU, $1,500 to Trinity Elementary East and West, $1,000 to Trinity Junior High High School, and $1,500 to Western Wellness Foundation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the community. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I should mention, President Johnson, the $1,000 that was awarded to the City of Dickinson was for the Crooked Crane Trail.
Well, great. Mr. Kessel, did you finish up on your special assessment?
I did. I'll gladly go to the next one if we have time.
I think we do.
Okay. The next item is local option tax collections that we've received from, actually technically from the City of Devil's... Previously, there was a coding error that was made at the State Tax Department level that was sending tax receipts for occupancy tax to the City of Devil's Lake instead of coming to the City of Dickinson. That happened for several years, and once the error was found, there was a correction plan put in place that allowed the City of Devil's Lake to pay us back $5,000 a month until that balance was at zero. Recently, I was contacted by the State Tax Department saying that the City of Devil's Lake was having a hard time making those payments with that revenue stream and commitments that they had made previous to our agreement. We've agreed on a lower amount from $5,000 a month to $3,000 a month. That will extend their payments out until April of 2017, resulting in a partial payment of that month. So it's a slight reduction of $2,000 a month, but it does allow the City of Devil's Lake to continue operating with the commitments that they have made. So I'm hopeful that the City Commission doesn't have any objections to that payment plan. And then I do have just one quick thing I want to mention. We have a ribbon cutting tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. for the Public Safety Center. The public's invited. We'll be serving refreshments. The program starts at 9:00. It's highlighted by a presentation by Lieutenant Governor Drew Wrigley, and of course, President Johnson, and Bar Chief and Police Chief, among others. We'll also be providing tours that will start at 10:00, 10:00, 10:20, 10:40. We'll also be providing tours that will start at 10 o'clock, 10, 10:20, 10:40, and 11 o'clock, we'll be giving tours of the facility. So, so please come in now and look at the facility. We'd hate to show it to you later. It'll be held at the Public Safety Center. We'll, we plan for inclement weather, whether we have it or not, so we'll have it actually in the bay where the fire department will host, or have their vehicles in most of the time. Oh, up by State's, I'm sorry, the State Avenue, the intersection of State Avenue and 21st. It's on the northwest corner of that intersection. Thank you. That concludes my reports this evening.
All right. Okay, well, it's 5:20. We have a 5:20 timetable agenda item. And this would be a public hearing. The ordinance would be ordinance 1594, oh, 1595.
Yes, 1595.
1595. And this is, again, relating to the liquor licenses. And we'll have City Attorney Goss introduce this item, and then we'll ask for public comment.
Attorney Nate Burey of Evil Top Sickler, who represents Legacy Seven, has presented a proposed revision to the liquor license code. The proposed ordinance would change the number of on-off sale liquor licenses that a person may own from two to five.
So this would be own or have an interest in?
Correct.
All right. So at this time, we're going to declare the public hearing open on ordinance 1595. Anyone who wishes to comment, either pro or con on this ordinance, may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
Doug Bolesky, thank you for your fine work you've completed here. Best of luck on your future endeavors. My name is Dean Bolesky. Together with my wife, Dora, we own the House of Booze in the T-Rex Mall. We are here today to voice our opposition to the changes proposed to the ordinance concerning possession limits on liquor licenses. Ordinances are in place for an obvious reason, usually originating from a concern or a problem. Granted, some can become outdated and need changing, but the reason for changing must come from the need to, one, solve a greater problem, or, two, make a positive change that would benefit the greater good. The request from the Legacy Group does not demonstrate the need for either one. It only creates a benefit for their group. It does not solve a problem other than their own, and doesn't serve the greater good when looking at the majority of single license holders. Mr. Kessel has stated several times in past meetings that there are 18 licenses in the city. Doing the math, subtracting the three big box stores takes you to 15. Subtracting the two legacy licenses and their perceived desire to merge with the owner of Liquor Warehouse and Southview Liquors, which was on their first license application last May when they applied for the vintage license, and was then removed because of the two license limit. Again, subtracting these four licenses from 15 takes you to 11. The 11 single license holders are clearly the majority that will be affected by this ordinance change, and the effect will be negative. This change will create a competitive advantage for anyone owning several stores because they will be in a much better position to purchase their liquor supplies in much larger volumes and get deeper cost discounting with chain rates than the single stores. This is the dark secret they are not telling you. This is the same thing the big box stores can do because of their multi-store contracts. We are constantly having to compete with that. Other benefits they would enjoy are consolidation of employees and managers that can be spread across multiple stores instead of just their two. This ordinance change will only benefit the Legacy Group, which is the minority, and hurt the majority of single license holders. I ask you, why is this ordinance change even being considered when it can cause some extreme damage to the majority? If this change is made and this Pandora's Box is opened, where does it stop? Next year, someone comes and asks for unlimited licensing? This could move Dickinson to the point where the future, point in the future, when there would be, whenever there's going to be a new license open for bid because of the 3,000 population growth, as our current ordinance allows, that any new licenses could get bought up by deep money interests and not another new liquor store would ever be opened again in this city. And that goes completely against the reason for opening a license for bid in the first place. And that reason is to provide more services and product to the growing, growing population in a controlled manner. Their attorney stated in their presentation that his clients are interested in improving the community. This is somewhat of a ridiculous statement when considering that a monopoly could stifle any new stores and licenses. Since when does it improve or benefit our city by changing this or any other ordinance? So a special interest group gains a competitive advantage at the expense of the majority. In one of the last meetings, President Johnson had concerns about the future and success of a multiple party partnership such as this one and the admin challenge this could present. These partnerships rarely last and usually dissolve or go through some turmoil after a short period of time. I know this, I've experienced it myself. But then what? You could open the door for a large, big money interest that could take over and buy up multiple licenses at once and further hurt the single license holder with even larger multi-store contracts. And then so much for the desire to keep the money in Dickinson. That just went out the window. And a monopoly potential is very real. Even if this group says they don't plan for that, you can't base a decision about, about an out of control future based on that statement. They aren't asking for this change just to hang five licenses on the wall and gloat about it. They're asking for a very real competitive advantage, one that will eventually take control of the licenses from you, the Commission, and place it in a potentially dark and corrupt place. Think about it. Is this what we want to do here? Mr. Kessel's concerns in the last meeting about a monopoly are valid and real. Mr. Carson's concerns about devaluing his existing licenses are valid and real. We are requesting that you do not change this ordinance just so a minority few can profit by gaining a competitive advantage, ignoring the interests of the majority and creating a mess in the future. Remember, they have not given you any valid reason for requesting this change other than the disguise of improving themselves and the community. This is an end around. You have all stated that you have concerns and reservations about changing this, and there is good reason. You know it is a wrong move in your heart and mind, and there is a good reason for that. Do the right thing and vote no on this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolesky. Would you take any questions at the moment?
If you would.
Any comments or questions? All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? No other comments, we'll declare the public hearing closed and invite comments by the City Commission or city staff.
Mr. President.
Mr. Fisher Steiner.
This was brought up. It has been on my mind a little bit, you know, the concerns was, you know, whether we'd go to percentage of the licenses we have out there and so on. I never was for that for a simple reason that, you know, the amount of license that individuals could then own. And it was stated that, well, it really doesn't mean all big box stores are going to be owned. But personally, I think big box store with five licenses can do an awful lot of damage to, oh, that type of thing. In the Legacy Seven, I'm assuming there are seven to be ownership, owners of the group, I don't know how many of them, this be their first license?
Mr. Fisher Steiner, there's actually six members in that group. There were seven, but because the seventh person already had an interest in two licenses, we asked that they remove that individual, so they've done so. So now there's six remaining people. I guess I can't tell you off the top of my head how many of them already have maxed out their interest in two licenses, but that is something we'll research for you and find you an answer.
I'm assuming none of them have maxed out at two, if you're allowing them to, well, not necessarily, they could have, couldn't they? Yeah.
Anyone from Legacy want to speak on that? How many of your six owners, would this be their first license? Or are there any with two already?
President Johnson, Mr. Fisher, my name is Mike Stottinger. The group of six that we have right now, this is the first liquor license, is that any of them owned?
Okay, so the seventh member, as Mr. Kessel mentioned, already has two, and this would have made him three.
Yep.
So at this point in time, it's really a moot point whether you need up to five or even more than the two that the city, city has on our books now, correct? I mean, if everybody just owns one now, do we need to address it more than, than the two that we're allowing?
It's, it's hard to answer that question because, I mean, there are ways that it could be, that one person could own two licenses. We're trying to involve the whole group.
If you would have said that there is a couple individuals with two now, and this would make them the three taking on this additional one, I don't know, I would probably be okay with that. But the way our ordinance is now is we're asking for, for five to be the limit, and I could not support this ordinance tonight saying that, you know, we could have, any one person could have up to five licenses. So with, with none of you having one right now, you know, I don't know how much of an issue it is if, if we don't approve this at all and handle it again when the next time it comes up and see if things have changed.
Mr. Stottinger, your group, the six members of the Legacy Seven, right now, they only have an interest in one liquor license?
Two.
You have two.
Yep. The group Legacy Seven, which is owned by six individuals, has an interest in two liquor licenses.
At this point?
Yep.
Okay.
But it's a group. It's not an individual.
Right.
And there's no one, there's no one...
So each, the six individuals in that group are involved in two liquor licenses.
And there's no one person in that group that owns 50%? Has a controlling interest of your group?
Correct. It's less than 50%.
But this ordinance doesn't prevent that happening? I mean, your group or any other group, I mean, it could be a group of six with one person having more than a 50% financial interest in the group. This ordinance doesn't address that at all?
That's correct. It does not address that.
I still want to get clarification. So the license that you want to purchase, that will give everybody two. You only have one now, but you haven't been approved for the additional one.
No, we have two.
You have two.
No, we have two.
So this approval, you're looking for three then?
We're looking for five.
But right now, everybody has two.
We're not adding up, we're not taking ownership percentages that any individual owns less than 50%. We're not taking those percentages and equalling them to 200%, per se, if you want to look at it that way.
Okay, if I, if I could, the seventh person you had, though, had that person still been involved, then you would be more than the two.
Yes.
Is the reason for the request so that that person can then become involved again with the Legacy Group?
That's the idea.
Okay, so in other words, if I'm understanding things right, if we pass this ordinance, you will have a seventh person in your group who would then own a portion of more than two licenses. Is that correct?
I, we can't, we can't do that if this ordinance doesn't change.
I understand that, but if we pass the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, please, come on. You're part of the same group.
Mr. President, Commissioners, let me just shed a little light on this. What Legacy Seven is, is a group of seven people who own a couple gas stations. They have purchased two liquor licenses. One of the owners already owns two liquor licenses, and he actually is 50% owner of those other two liquor licenses. The seventh guy, if we brought him in, would never own, nobody would ever own more than a total of two liquor licenses. We're just trying to grow the convenience store, gas station, liquor store concept. We're building a facility for millions of dollars. It's monopolistic, this is, this is good.
Mr. Keatley, though, make sure we understand this. If we pass this tonight, will you be bringing that person back in so that you would have one person owning more than two licenses?
We would have seven people owning four licenses, but nobody will own more than two complete shares.
Okay, okay.
There, there is no majority. Nobody owns more than 50%. That will not, cannot happen.
I understand that part, yeah.
Mr. Kessel.
Mr. Keatley, Mr. Stottinger, I asked this question at the last public hearing, and your attorney attempted to, to answer it. Since you'd be a group that would own licenses, whether it's two or three or four or five, you would all be listed on the licenses, we do the background checks and such. If one member of your group, God forbid, gets a DUI or something of that nature, that would jeopardize the licenses that, that that individual's listed upon, how would we, or how would you propose that we as a city deal with that issue, where he's basically put in jeopardy every license that you, that he would be or she would be attached to?
We've put some thought into this, and what we would do is put two people per license, just randomly picked, like Mike and Terry would be on one liquor store license, and Jim Bob and Billy Joe would be on the other one. That way, there's two people per license, they own the licenses, but this is just for our accounting sakes. You know, we have seven people who are trying to grow some business and keep investing.
I don't think it works that way from the city's perspective. We have to know who actually owns the license, whether it's a corporation, an individual, a partnership, we have to know who owns it. So if it's the Legacy Seven group that owns it, that's, that's who owns it. And if that's a partnership, then, and if it's a partnership of six people that are listed on the license, that's the way that would work.
If it came down as a background check and somebody getting a DUI or becomes a felon, then that would, we would have to take care of that at the corporate level. And that person would be out, be off the license.
If that's the way we have to do it, yes. Mike is right, that person's gone.
That's about your only option, because if the city comes to you and says you've got a problem here, if someone's done something bad to the extent that they cannot be part of your group, they can't, whether it's a very small minority interest in this or a large interest in it, they can't be, you have to, in a sense, take them out of that group. I don't think there's another alternative.
No, President Johnson, I'm glad you asked that question because that was, that I was going to point out as well.
I know you've asked in the past about if there should be a cutoff percentage of, of an owner that you have to do a background check on. Now, I guess personally, I'm, I'm open to anything. If you wanted to cut it, put it at 10%, and anyone at 10% doesn't have to have a background check done, and we can work with that. But, I mean, for now, the way we're going to, the way it's set up is if you own 1% to 99%, you, a background check has to be done.
That's correct.
And by us owning four licenses among seven people, it's not a whole lot of extra work when you consider four... work when you consider four licenses, not just one.
Right, and in that scenario, I'm way more concerned about something appearing on that background check that isn't conducive to issuing a license.
And that's our problem.
Yes. Yes, it is.
Other comments?
If you have three now, and this would be your four, correct?
We'd be combining two and two to make four.
If you bring your seventh person.
So you're in line with the two up, with the current ordinance. So between the two and two, you're going to form Legacy Seven, and then you're going to be at four, of which no one member owns over 50%.
Correct.
Okay. So the question is, is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, is who the owners are of Legacy Seven, is some people are concerned about Legacy Seven owning X amount of licenses above the two. Is that correct? I mean, that would be, that's the concern that I'm hearing out there amongst some of the other liquor store owners, is currently now you're at two, and you're going to go to four if this is approved, and we get closer to more of a, I don't want to say a big-box mentality, but what they're worried about is someone that can control the market.
We won't be able to control the market, but we'll be able to compete with the big-box better.
As we've talked about this the last whatever number of weeks, I keep searching for a reason to oppose this tonight, you know, my mind is saying, let's be careful here because we can't, we won't back up on this once we do it. I've only gotten one call on this, and that was from a liquor store owner. That person was very much in favor of the change, and that person's, and it wasn't part of the Legacy Group, it was somebody who owns it, one of the establishments in town. That person said, you know, this is the only way we're going to compete with the big boxes, is if people can buy ownership if they desire to, and increase their buying power, increase their efficiencies, and as a local owner, perhaps better compete with the big boxes. That was really interesting to me. It was just one phone call, one store.
Yep.
But that was the, that was the logic of that particular person, and it makes sense to me. The competition's already there with the big boxes.
Yes.
It's already there for everybody.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Should we close the public hearing, and we kind of reopened it? I'll just ask if there's anybody else that wishes to comment.
Tracy Toose, owner of TH Investments, I do own the other two liquor licenses. Mr. Jackson, your exactly point on, we're governed by state law in liquor stores. We can never price under wholesale pricing, so if we buy a case of Coors Light for $15, it's illegal for us in North Dakota to sell it under wholesale pricing. Means we can never sell it for $14.99. Currently, Cashwise, Family Fair, Walmart, and those people are under a corporate pricing structure, which means that they have over four liquor licenses in any state, they get a discount. And to compete with them, right now, we're holding three, because I hold one in Mandan, we're almost there. And that does change the market. It doesn't make it a minority, it makes the price cheaper in the city of Dickinson so we can compete with them. And currently, right now, I don't know of the other liquor store that you've talked to, but right now, as long as we don't change the number, 18 I think it is, Sean, as long as that doesn't increase, our liquor license, whether I hold three, four, five, doesn't affect the value. We saw what happened to it, and the value sure went up quickly. $200,000, in my recollection, up.
Our last bid, our sold for over $400,000.
Yeah, it went up $200,000 from the last one. I think it was at $180,000, and it shot to $445,000.
Yeah, $430,000, I think, yep.
I think some of the comments made in this room tonight aren't true, because the value of it, and I've owned a liquor license since the year 2000 in the city of Dickinson, and when one of our partners did get into a little trouble, I think Mr. Johnson would probably remember it, because I don't know, I think Carson was on the board as well. We had 14 days to remove that individual from our liquor license. It's doable. You know, so it, you know, things do happen, and that does fall in the corporate structure of how you're going to deal with it. It doesn't fall in your guys' hands. I believe at that time, Chief Rumel got ahold of us and said, here's your notice. And I do believe we had to experience a 24-hour day shutdown till all the paperwork was brought to the administrator's attention and finalized. So it happens, it falls in our court to deal with it. One of the things that was mentioned is we've got a black cloud. I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to put it in front of you, gentlemen, and say, we're doing it right. We're trying to do it right. There is ways, which Sean has offered to us, to do this without the commission knowing in two people on this license, one people on this license, and combining profits later. I don't think that's right. That's hiding behind something that we don't want to do. We're trying to do it right, we're bringing it to you guys, and our business model is only just for pricing. That's it. And it's not a minority pricing, for sure, because we've seen what Walmart's done, and I'd put Walmart up to what it did for Mr. Newby's business at Newby's Ace Hardware. I think if you brought Mr. Newby in here, he'd say, customer service is what's going to get you in the long run to compete with those big boxes. And I think we all know that Ace Hardware's got a very good business since Walmart is here. And when Walmart came in, I know he was one of the first people that sat at this podium and said, whoa, don't let Walmart in. I think Walmart has helped him, because you go into Ace, Newby's Hardware, and you get customer service. That's what we're trying to bring to the table in this market.
Mr. Toose, I want to clarify something. You said something about that I suggested--
No, you said that there's ways for people to own more just by dividing the group and bringing it together later. Well, that's not what we want to do. And I think it was just at one of the earlier meetings where you were making comment that, well, there's ways to do this. Well--
I don't think he meant legal ways or ethical ways.
Yeah.
He's saying that, you know, the city doesn't have the staff to go out and audit individual businesses and make sure that they're standalone and there aren't any kind of background agreements. I think that's what he was researching.
Well, and that's, that's to the contrary. If you have four, it's very easy to do one check for four licenses rather than 18 individual ones.
Yeah, that might have been when the presentation, when we were considering percentages to equal to two. That was a proposal that was made by, actually, Legacy Seven.
That just sounds convenient.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to comment?
I wasn't planning to comment, but a comment that was made, and I think there's some other issues you guys have to look at down the line. The comment was just made that if one of these seven people ends up having a fellow, gets into trouble, and they have to take them off, as a corporation, they can pull them off. As a single licensee, a person who owns their own liquor license, we don't have that. I mean, you come to us and you say you're in trouble, your license is full. I mean, I think that gives them, I think it's something that down the line, if all of a sudden you have to start looking at that, we'd have to make some changes to ordinances some otherwhere, so like a person like myself or my husband who owns his own license, and let's say he got a DUI or whatever, what do we do? We can't just say, well, we'll change it to our kids or something. So I just, I'd happen to hear that, and I'm just not sure that that's the right route we need to be going either. I mean, so we have seven people, and so one of them gets in trouble, we just take them off and we're okay?
So you're suggesting as a single owner, you're more accountable?
Well, yes, I'm thinking. I mean, so yes, you do a background check on seven, but if all of a sudden you have somebody in trouble, the other six can just boot them out, and they're okay, their license is, I mean, it's not quite, I just think it's an issue.
And I think that's another discussion, a whole separate discussion.
Well, I'm thinking it's something that happened to you down the line, if you pass it. I just think you've got to look into the future, too. There's other items I think that could come out of this, but that's all I need to say.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else wish to comment? Okay, well, for the second time, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and ask if there are additional comments by commissioners or other city staff. Okay. No other comments? Will there be a motion regarding first reading of ordinance 1595?
I would make that motion.
And you're moving to approve it?
Moving to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
I, I'm still saying that I think we need to move cautiously here, and I hope we hear from more ownership in Dickinson before second reading, but I'm willing to do the first reading so we can move forward and do that.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. What I said at a previous meeting was if this passes first reading, we would hold a public hearing where there would be no vote on the second reading, and then two meetings from now, we would put it on the agenda, then four voting on the second reading, so hopefully this is getting enough public interest, enough publicity, that the public wouldn't be caught unaware. Other comments?
I would agree, and I would just echo what I said last night. I still think five is a rather large number. Two may not be enough, but I'm still not comfortable with the number five either.
Thank you, Mr. Alvin. Anyone else?
As you said, Mr. President, I'm going to vote yes on this here, and between now and the next two weeks for that second reading, maybe something else will come up, some other numbers, whatever, but I guess this time I can support.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Motion is to approve the first reading. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Alvin?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair Bostnay, motion carries four to one. The next item on the timetable is a public hearing regarding the 2016 budget. For those of you wishing to comment on the 2016 budget, I think we'll go ahead and have the presentation by Deputy City Administrator Valesky, and then at conclusion of his presentation, we'll open it up to public comment. So, Mr. Valesky?
Thank you, President Johnson, and members of the commission. What I'm going to do today on this presentation is, instead of going through the entire budget all over again, just talk about the changes that we've made between the last budget discussion and now. And so what I'd like to do is just go through the ordinance, and what I did on the presentation here is just I broke the ordinance out so we can look at it, and talk about just the changes that have been made since our last meeting. So starting out with the general fund departments, the only change that we have in the general fund departments is, if we're going through each of the departments here, is under administration. And the increase there was $30,000 that was reinput due to the proposed change to step in grade system. The amount that you're seeing there is $32,295. That's because the $2,295 were the additional benefits that came upon with those, with Okay, so just looking at all the whole general fund departments there, the only change that we had was in administration, and so we have that increase of $32,295. So overall, the difference of what we're looking at at our 2015 budget compared to the new 2016 proposed budget, we are actually going down $526,482 in further general fund. Any questions on the general fund?
I should make it clear that the $32,000 that's in the administration budget addition that was mentioned by Mr. Valesky is to cover all of the exempt staff that might be impacted by the change. It's not my salary increase, nor is it Mr. Valesky's.
Okay, but as long as we're talking about that, if we approve this, that new schedule would be used by you in setting salaries for 2016, and as we look at your salary for 2016, that is the intent.
That is correct. The city, we have a couple positions that we're going to be hiring--
Sure.
--that are going to also impact those dollars.
Sure.
Probably more so than exist.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the library expenditure appropriations. As we discussed previously here, we're proposing a $1,061,000 budget for the library. That is an increase of $100,000 over the expenditure appropriation from the 2015 budget, but there's also a projected revenue increase on the other side of $72,000, so really the net effect, the net difference is only $28,000. Moving on to the special revenue funds, looking at the, on this page here, the only change that we have is on the half percent city sales tax fund, and this was an oversight on my part for the water and sales tax revenue bond payment that we have to start making. And just to back up a little bit, I believe you all received a packet of, these are all the things that, you still have your binder from last time, these are just the replacements from that, so you'll have a full updated section in there. And I'm going to talk a little about the water and sales tax revenue bond when I get to the debt service, so we'll move on from here to that. In the oil impact fund, this is where the majority of the changes that happened this time. And what we did is, in our previous discussions on our proprietary funds, particularly in the wastewater, we are starting to make the SRF bond payments. We have a total of $5.3 million of new expenditures in our budget for 2016 to start making those bond payments. I had sent, and we'll go over this in a little bit here, but I believe in your packet you received some rate increases that I'd like to propose. Included in that is the .33 that we are, that you just covered in the, earlier today for starting in October. And so I'll go into that detail when we get more into the proprietary stuff. But for the oil impact fund, we are proposing to take $4.4 million transfer out of the oil impact fund and move it into the wastewater fund to offset a portion of that $5.3 million increased expenditure. The decrease in the oil impact fund that's listed there, you probably, I don't know if you can see it or not, there in the small, under the reason there, there's $101,000 of the general fund that is being decreased from the oil impact fund. And the reason for that is tied to the proprietary again, because as we increase the revenues in the proprietary with increased rates, 10% of that portion goes back into the general fund. To keep our general fund balanced, we reduced the amount of oil impact money going into the general fund. the general fund. Does that make sense? Okay. We have currently in 2015, we have $3.5 million of oil impact fund that is going into our general fund to offset expenditures to help with our, with, with current rates to the citizens. And in 2016, that amount's going to be just under $2.9 million. There's a decrease of $603,000 of that transfer moving from oil impact into, into the general So, that being said, as far as special revenue, the difference between the 2015 budget and 2016 budget, we're looking at an increase of just, just under $450,000. Now, if you look at the 215 budget ordinance, that's not what this amount is. And the reason for that is we have to look at these oil impact funds on a biennial and so we're going to have to do an amendment to book the expenses for every, that we're, that we use this oil impact funds in the appropriate year. So, this is just leveling, leveling it out to match with the expenditures that we have planned in 2015 and what's going to be left in 2016. Okay, in the debt service funds, um, sorry, it's kind of dark in here. The only thing that I added in here was that water and sales tax revenue fund, what this was, there's a, a series 2014 water and sales tax revenue bonds that we received of, for $15 million over 10 years. We only accepted the first draw that was required to be made of $965,000 plus the cost of issuance of $128,000, so there was a total of almost $1.1 million that we received out of that $10 million, we're not, or $15 million. We're not planning at this point of getting any further debts, we're not going to use any more of those funds, but we do have to start paying off that $1 million, $1.1 million off. And that information, if you wanted, is in that sheet in here for the water and sales tax revenue bonds. So, that being said, that is $125,000 a year that we have to spend to make those payments and that is according to that bond being paid out of the one-half sales tax, so that's why, that's where you're seeing it in there. So, overall, in our debt service fund, the difference between our 2015 budget and the proposed 2016, there's an increase of $400,446. Again, these debt service funds are, these are specific funds for these appropriate, these particular purchases. When I was talking about the SRF monies that are in wastewater, they're included in wastewater, so that's why you're not seeing those in here. Any questions on that? Okay, I didn't make any, just changes on the building destruct, and other funds which includes the building construction fund and the internal service fund or our fleet fund. The only thing I want to address here is the 2015 budget down to the 2016 budget, there's about $11 million decrease. That being said, our 2015 building construction fund did include funding for our public safety center, the public works building and the wastewater treatment plant. And then also in 2015, we are going to have to do an amendment that, that will help match the expenditures to the appropriate years for that also. For the proprietary fund appropriations, majority of the changes that were made since we talked last time is on the revenue side and on the rate side. So, what you see here is under the water distribution fund and the wastewater and plant fund, there has been an increase in some expenditures. Majority of that is because they have to now pay a little bigger portion of that 10% going into the general fund. So, that's why you're seeing some changes in there. The $6,000 and the $5 in the solid waste and stormwater fund, I just reported that incorrectly on the previous ordinance, I apologize for that. The numbers haven't changed, I'm not sure why we were off there, so I just reported something differently, but these do agree with what was in the ordinance. So, overall, the proprietary funds for 2015 budget, we were at $17.669 million and we are looking at going up about $3 million. And again, the majority of that is that $5.3 million SRF fund bonding that we have to start paying for. So, talking a little bit on the revenue side for the proprietary rates, as I mentioned earlier when Senator Goss was talking about the .33 increase that we're going to start in October, this is with the report that was made by the 2015 Annual North Central Utility Rate Survey as reported by Nexus and AETES. The typical monthly residential total utility bill, this is, this includes water, wastewater and stormwater. We are currently at $61.08. And this is for a typical residence which includes 6,000 gallons a month and I believe it's on a 5/8 inch pipe, is that right? Meter. Meter, thank you. Nobody understands, we had a discussion the other day, that I've never paid a, a water bill in my life till I moved here, so I'm, I'm trying to learn the, the lingo here. So, that being said, I want to talk about what the increases are going to mean to the average citizen.
Mr. Valesky?
Yes.
Before we leave that last slide, if you could go back, are we able to have any discussion at all about top and bottom, especially the top cities in that list that are so much lower than us? Would it be speculation to talk about why?
There's been a lot of discussion about, especially a couple of those cities that are on the top or bottom, however you want to look at it, the lowest end of that structure. One of those cities has actually made a commitment at legislative level to increase their fees by 20% each year for the next five years. I'm not sure that that amount that's reflected there has that increase factored into it. So, I'm expecting that in 2016, you're going to see some fairly significant changes. I can tell you the city of West Fargo is looking at connecting to the city of Fargo when it comes to treatment, so they're also going to see some rather sizable increases in their utility bills. I don't know, I can't speak to Devil's Lake at all, but there's going to, you're going to see some movement, especially at the lower end with two cities in particular that I'm aware of.
I mean, it seems so obvious, but when we see numbers like this, it would seem that you guys would want to know why the disparity, there's probably some very obvious reason. Yeah. I'd sure be interested in knowing.
Okay.
The city of Dickinson pays a fair amount for its water source, meaning with Southwest Water. And some of the other cities, they may have, say, well water, that they own their own wells and they probably, other than the cost of operating the wells, they don't, I don't know if they pay a piece of water. And that's, see, that's the issue now, West Fargo, they're going to jump quite a bit because, I forget the numbers exactly, but I think it's around $3.50, $1,000, that they're going to pay the city of Fargo for water and that's quite a bit more than what they're accustomed to paying for their, for their water. And we actually pay Southwest Water more than $3.50, $1,000.
We're over $5. What else to say on the wastewater, the side, your discharge stream makes a huge difference in the type of treatment that you have to make. Our discharge stream has been the Hart River, which is a low-flow river. When you discharge into the Missouri, for instance, that allows for a much different discharge parameters and so your treatment capacity is different, or your treatment that you, you have to provide is, is way different than what we have to provide. We have to treat to a much higher level because of that low-flow environment and that adds cost to our, to our consumer. And I think Public Works Director Zeroff can probably speak to that better than I can if you would like to, but, you know, in that case, you have several cities that are lower than us that have that access to a discharge stream that we simply don't. Now, our hope is to turn that discharge stream into a revenue source and use that reused water in the work. Hopefully, we'll be there in the very short, in the near term.
President Johnson, one thing I'd like to mention, like, for example, for Williston, I think they're just getting their new treatment facility up and running, you know, it's over $100 million facility. I just talked to the Public Works Director a month or so ago, they're going to require 15 staff to run their facility. So, I see that their wastewater charge increasing considerably. I know, I think they use a lot of their oil monies for their employees for covering the staff, which I think has kept some of the rates down considerably, so I think those changes are, are in the making for the top town there.
Thank you, Mr. Zeroff. Okay, Mr. Valesky, continue.
So, that being said, and I, I believe in your packets you received the 2016 proposed rate changes. What this means for the typical residential customer here utilizing 6,000 gallons with a 5/8 meter charge, our current rate is $36.33 and that would go typically for a month, excuse me, to $38.31, so that .33 increase is about $1.98 per household, as I mentioned earlier. Now, this .33 increase, we did receive a .33 increase charged from Southwest Water in 2015 and we are projecting another .33 increase in Southwest Water rates in 2016. We're only accounting for, we're only increasing it by the .33 cents in October, we're not asking to increase it again in the 2016 budget. So, this one that we're just did today will offset the, we're not asking for another one in 2016. The monthly wastewater utility billing, again, we're proposing a 15 cent increase on that, so for 6,000 gallon usage, that's a monthly charge of about $12,000, that would go up about 90 cents to $12.90. And then the flat, the basic flat rate, we're, we're proposing $2 increase, so that would go from $11 to $13. So, overall in wastewater, that's about a $2.90 increase a month. The stormwater, we're not asking for any increase at all in that area, so the typical monthly residential utility bill with these increases for water and wastewater would be approximately $4.88 a month.
Okay, thank you.
And then, last thing I wanted to discuss tonight was, or this afternoon, was you had mentioned about the number of FTE, new FTE for 2016. So, this chart that's up here does not include seasonals or part-time positions, but full-time equivalent FTE, we are asking for eight new FTE. Also though, on the other side, we do have a decrease of four FTE that we are not, that were approved in the 2015 ordinance that we are not requesting again in, in 2016. So, there's really only a four FTE increase that we're asking for in 2016. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have at this time. If you have to answer any questions.
Just to remind the commission, we're not really approving anything. We've already approved first reading. Mr. Valesky outlined the changes that have taken place since first reading. At our next meeting, you'll be asked to approve the, the second reading. The main reason that we're discussing the public for the budget here now is we have a, this is a required public hearing. And so, before we get to the public though, I just would want to point out that, you know, along with the financial budget, there's two other main documents that go with the budget. One is the, all our rate schedules and fees, which I think are, have been presented to you. And the other then is the compensation schedule. And what I suggested at the last meeting is grades eight through 12 should be raised approximately 15%. And I guess before we get to the public hearing, I would just like to ask you as commissioners, are you okay with that change being brought forward as part of the second reading two weeks from now? Does anybody object to that? Two weeks ago, I asked if you had questions to meet with Mr. Kessel and go through things. Does anybody have any objections to including this in the second reading?
No. Has a direct effect on the budget, I think we have to.
Okay. Okay, and then, Mr. Decker?
No, I, I guess the only calls, I, I've received one call since that time and I guess there, there was a concern by the citizen. If you look at like cost of living increases in other areas, they're minus 1%, 2%. But I also expressed that I know we're retaining people at the higher level, the higher-end people, we need to be competitive. And I think that needs to go across the board. We need to keep the people that we have here because the cost of losing the experience, be it not only at these levels, all the way down, is horrendous for a city, especially in the, you know, the timeframe that we're in right now with the, with the oil going down. We just need to retain all the people we can and not have to retrain them and spend the time, you know, we're losing Mr. Valesky.
Or the cost of outsourcing.
Yes, exactly.
We feel, we have contracted employees and when we outsource, they cost up to twice-
Exactly.
Twice what it was the cost of deploying. So, we either spend the money one way or we spend it the other way.
Did you want to mention that the cost of living increase in the budget is 1.5%? So, it is in line, I guess, with what you're calling, mentioning?
Okay, well, then, going forward, unless we make some other changes here before we conclude tonight, the, this would be the second reading of the budget. We would also have the fee schedule that has been sent to you and then the compensation schedule would, would have grades one through seven, the way they were presented to us, grades eight through 12 would include the numbers then that I presented at the last meeting. So, with that, we're going to declare the budget hearing open and those members of the public who would like to comment regarding the 2016 budget may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public that would like to comment? Hearing none, then we'll declare the public hearing closed. That concludes the timetable agenda and I think, Mr. Kessel, you were done with your reports?
I was, President Johnson.
And so, I think our next item is under engineering and Assistant City Engineer Marshick is going to present this item and I, I know it's a construction management amendment regarding KJ.
Good evening, President Johnson, commissioners. The item before you is amendment number three to our task order S2 with KJ. This amendment includes design and construction management services for State Avenue from 21st to 40th Street West. This amendment would modify the original task order by an increase of $196,500, giving us an adjusted- us an adjusted contract amount of $1,187,114.98. These changes cover additional work items and services requested by the city, which included design changes, project additions, and items that arose while we were working with the adjacent property owners. After careful review, the city staff recommends approval. Do you have questions?
Did some of the extra work have to do with spending more time with the construction company, too?
It did. Originally, I think KLJ looked at a five-day work week, 10 hours a day. And at our pre-construction meeting, we approved a six-day work week, 12 hours a day, so that added some extra time. We also allowed them to work some Sundays and weekends, or Sundays and holidays, so that we could keep things on track to get what we needed instructed to the public safety center. So that definitely increased their time spent on the job.
So this is essentially so we could finish that street in time for the public safety center to open and be able to operate?
Correct.
Anybody else have a question?
Oh, I guess I have one, Mr. President. Was the intersection not originally planned to be concrete?
Correct. It was a two-minute section, and we went forward with an amendment to change that to concrete. We thought that would be a more durable choice in that location.
And the approaches, they just afterthought into the additions there?
I believe that was something that was shown on the plat. And I'm not sure where we're at with that discussion, as far as if we're actually going to go forward with those approaches.
But we're paying for them?
Well, it was something that we asked them to look at with our design.
And then, I guess, one other question, that the road that's running behind the public, what are we going to do with that road that's coming off states there that's running behind the public safety building? Is that something that's going to be additional down the road, too, that we're going to end up paying for?
I believe at this time, it's shown on the plat for the public safety center as half of what would eventually be, could be a city street right-of-way with. And so what has been talked about is to have that as a private road. When we first were looking into this, I think we anticipated that Mr. Cook might come in with a development that would do the north half of that. And since that hasn't been the case, we have been looking at having the public safety center come in with a private drive, so to speak. There's still some negotiation on how that is going to get completed, but maybe Mr. Kubis could help me with my recollection if we are, if that's attached to something with the public safety center or if that's been included in this project.
It was discussed to include it with the State Avenue project. With the timelines, obviously, the public safety center is at opening right now. It was included with the public safety center project. Right now, there's a development that is anticipating developing north and west of the public safety center. They've asked to, they need to, if that development moves forward, needs to install a sewer line. That's why that road isn't constructed today. Just recently asked them, as of this morning, you know, that they have to commit to this sewer installation or not. But the road was always a city cost, Commissioner Decker. It was, it was talked about whether the cost should be a part of the State Avenue project or with the public safety center. But that road was intended to be a city cost, either way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, this is a construction management contract amendment with KLJ. It would increase their contract amount by $196,500. Is there a motion regarding this amendment? Is there a second?
A second.
Yeah, the motion and the second, is there any other discussion?
I will abstain from the vote, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other discussion? Hearing none, then we're going to go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and Mr. Jackson abstains, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we have anything else on the agenda. So are there any reports or further comments by commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. No one from the public, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say name, the motion carries for adjourn.